Good morning, everybody, and welcome. This is our regular commission meeting of the Mason County Commission for July 2nd. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Kelly, would you do us the honor of leading us?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Kevin Shutey.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
I'm here.
Okay. Item number four, we have a quorum. Uh, item number four correspondence, do you have any correspondence or organizational business to come before the body?
We do. The Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in the following: Special occasion liquor license for the Port of Allen waterfront park, liquor license approval for Spencer Lake grocery, discontinued liquor license for Westside Pizza and Belfair, and notice of cannabis license application for Royal Kingdom Garden LLC. Randy Lewis sent in an application for the Planning Advisory Commission. Department of Energy sent in notice for individuals interested in the Shelton Fairmount Transmission Line rebuild and fiber optic system replacement project. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission sent in notice regarding the Cushman Hydroelectric Project Recreational Use Monitoring Report. Central Mason Fire and EMS sent in an announcement of the merger of Mason County Fire District Number Three into Central Mason Fire and EMS. Olympic Regional Clean Air Agency sent in notice of contribution for the calendar year 2025. United States Bankruptcy Court District of New Jersey sent in notice of additional closures for Rite Aid Corporation. And the Department of Natural Resources sent holdover notification for aquatic land lease.
Excellent. Any other correspondence or organizational business?
There is not.
All right. Next item is item number five, open forum for citizens' input. This is your opportunity to speak to the commission on any item that is not on the agenda. If it is on the agenda, we ask that you wait, give us a moment at that time, and we'll give you an opportunity to testify or to talk to us. But if it's on the agenda, uh, if it's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to speak. I'm gonna go ahead and ask in the room first and then on Zoom land. Is there anybody in the room who would like to speak to the commission on any item that is not on the agenda? Anybody who would like to speak on any item not on the agenda? Hearing none, is there anybody in Zoom that would like to talk about any item not on the agenda? If so, either raise your hand or unmute yourself and I will call on you. Unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Hearing none?
I was calling Carmichael and I needed, I don't know if she wanted to say something else.
You see?
I'll bother that.
Carly and?
Colleen.
Colleen Carmichael, did you talk, oh, there you are. Would you like to speak to us?
Good morning, Commissioner Trask, Commissioner Netherland, and Commissioner Shutey. I'm Colleen Carmichael, and I represent the Homeless Task Force Providers in Mason County. I'd like to take a moment to bring you back in time to 2022. The commissioners paid the FCS group $50,000 to perform a housing needs assessment for Mason County. One of the three recommended actions in the assessment was follow the approach used by the Bremerton Housing Authority to formally appeal the current HUD calculated income limits for determining housing voucher eligibility levels. In response to that recommendation, our task force requested ARPA funds to pay for a study to appeal the HUD calculated income limits. The cost of the study was approximately $70,000. The commissioners had over $700,000 in remaining ARPA funds. Even though it was one of the three recommendations from the housing needs assessment, and it was a mere 10% of the total ARPA funds, the commissioners elected not to pay for our request to fund the study. On behalf of the agencies who are working to increase housing in our county, we are asking you to help us understand why you did not prioritize funding the study that would have increased available rental units for low-income families. We are aware there were more applications than expected, and all the applications have merit, but you had every reason and opportunity to fund the study, given the advice of the assessment you paid for it in 2022. We were deeply disappointed and confused by your decision. By failing to prioritize accessible, affordable housing, you ignore the primary driver of homelessness, the severe shortage of housing affordable to the lowest income and most marginalized people. In addition, Commissioner Netherland recently made a public statement about a proposal he created using voluntary exile as part of a diversion program for people who are cited for squatting, being intoxicated in public, open use of illegal substances, and defecating in streets to create a cleaner, safer Mason County. There is countless research that demonstrates that providing affordable housing and voluntary services is more cost-effective than outdated approaches, including criminalization. With limited state and local budgets, elected officials should turn to humane, cost-effective policies, not ineffective measures that waste taxpayer dollars. You may not personally know any of the individuals you are impacting, but you do know those of us who work in Mason County to reduce the number of unhoused people. Out of respect for us and the work we do in the community, and recognizing the weight your title carries when you make public statements, we ask that you author solutions that are founded on evidence-based practices and not solutions that are based on fear and stigma. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the commission on any item not on the agenda? If so, please unmute yourself. Hearing none, we will move forward. Next up is the adoption of today's agenda. Uh, commissioners, the, uh, Public Works has asked that we remove, uh, the hearing from our agenda and, you know, maybe have an okay agreement to go ahead and let them put it back on the agenda on the 30th. They did not do the proper, uh, noticing in order to move forward, so we can't even open the, the hearing. So I'd ask that any motion that we do for the agenda include the removal of item, uh, 10, 10.1.
Mr. Chair, I move adoption of today's agenda with, uh, removing item 10.1 to be, uh, properly noticed to the public at a future date.
And allow for it to be back on the 30th?
A lot of us are here for that item. Can you please explain why that's being removed?
I just did.
Well, I'm not savvy on your lingo, sorry. Explain to the poor civilians out here.
I will. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, um, perhaps we could have Loretta address that under item nine, uh, which is our opportunity for department heads and elected officials to just walk through how, um, that we didn't follow the appropriate notification process to the public.
So you just had a place here for open forum for citizen input if you're not on the agenda. Nobody here got up because we're on the agenda, and now we're not on the agenda. That's how I see it.
Yeah.
How's this working here?
That's, that's a good point. Uh, let us discuss that for a second. We do have within our parks, we have not set the agenda.
Yeah.
Could go ahead and move backwards to allow for some public comment on that, uh, if you would like.
I would say once we approve the agenda, then we can go back to public comment because then it's off the agenda. Because at the moment, it's still on the agenda until we approve the agenda.
Okay, so then what we can do is we can add an item to include the reopening of public comment. Would you accept that to add an item?
Yeah, so I'll withdraw my motion. And then, um, do you want to make that motion?
Okay. Um, Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda with the exclusion of item 10.1 and amend the agenda to also add public comment back into, um, the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
It has been moved in second for the removal of item, uh, 10.1, but also in addition of, uh, a new line item before entering into, uh, the action agenda, and if you don't mind, before approval of the minutes, uh, to open up for citizen comment again. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? None? Okay. We'll go ahead and move forward. This is the first time we've ever done that in all the 13 years I've been here, but your argument definitely held merit. So we've never had that situation before. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and move into pub, back into public comment. And you'll be given an opportunity now to speak on any item that's not on the agenda. Uh, there is a limit of three minutes per person under the agenda, 15 minutes total for everybody. We'll ask that, uh, if you have something that you would like to discuss, you raise your hand, we'll call on you. You'll come up to the podium and please say your name and perhaps where you're from, and then go ahead and, uh, give us your three minutes. With that being said, is there somebody who would like to talk about an item not on the agenda?
Yes.
Please. Please come forward, say your name, and tell us where you're from, please.
My name's Maria Aguev. I am from Shetland Woods Road. And I was expecting fully that we're having this item on this agenda. I don't understand the back and forth of why it's not there. I'm disappointed whoever messed that up. Um, we both, my husband and myself, want to see the county road system improved to a paved road for the extent that it's possible because one is for first responders that have easy access into that area, the deep woods. It's also brutal on everybody's cars going up and down that road that's rutted. And we are, take under, lots of people there work on getting the ruts out on their own time. That's not a safe process for anybody because it's just using, um, people's own equipment and their own selves standing out there with any, without any proper training for road improvement safety. And then also for weather. And that's the end of my comments.
All right, thank you. And just to clarify, the reason why is we can't have a public hearing if it isn't noticed properly. And apparently, we did not have it noticed properly, where it's put in the paper a certain amount of time beforehand. Yes, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, commissioners, it was actually, um, published in the paper. Um, but with the formation of an RID, we also mail individual notices to each and every property owner within the RID boundary.
And that didn't get done? There was not a proper notification mailed?
So, I mean, just can we pause there for a second? So does that affect our ability to actually hold, to open a hearing? Or, or is that just a best practice thing that we didn't do, that we could have opened the hearing and extended it?
It is required for the hearing, correct, Mike?
Yes.
For RCW.
So we will be opening it again after that message goes out there and people have another opportunity. Is there anybody else who would like to, to speak on any item that's not on the agenda?
I have a question why that notification did not go out because my understanding from the newspaper is that it's the county's responsibility to send those notifications out to the homeowners.
Yeah, 100%, that's what we're saying. We didn't do that, we made a mistake.
Well, who dropped the ball?
We did.
We did.
And so that's why we're, that's why we reopen comment.
Now we're extending this further and further out. In the meantime, like she said, all of our cars are being beat crap.
Yes. Would you mind, uh, because you're speaking, we need you to please stand up for a moment and tell the people who you are?
My name is Sally Sheets, and I live on Sunny Woods Road, which is off the end of Shetland Road. I've been there for six months. Um, and the road is extremely bad and has been. Um, it's a mile and a half, and it takes 10 minutes to travel it sometimes. That's how bad it is. Um, I was here because I read the notification in the newspaper. It was in there for the two weeks like it was supposed to be. So, like I say, my understanding, the county has dropped the ball.
That we fully admit that.
So where does that put us?
It puts us having the hearing at the end of this month.
No, I mean, the residents.
It's.
Further out for resolution to this matter.
Until the end of the month.
Yeah. Thank you.
Like, I don't think, and I'll just be, I'll just be clear to you. I don't think that, I don't think any of us are unsupportive of this RID. So it's not, it's, I, I think we're very much in support of moving it forward. It's just, we, as I said, we made a mistake. We own that. And we will do the hearing as quickly as we can based on the requirements that we have to make, not only to the newspaper, which is standard for all of our public hearings, but under the RID statutes, we also have to send notifications to everybody who would be within that RID. That's what we didn't do, we fully admit that. I understand you're upset, I understand you're frustrated. I've been on your road, I know how tough it is, okay? So like, we all get that, but we have to follow the law. And when we realize that we didn't follow the law, we have to stop and then get it right. So there's, there's a lot of support for your RID. You guys have waited a long time for this, we know that.
Well, I hope there's repercussions for those that do not do their job.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Okay, I would like to actually remind you one other thing on it because it's interesting. This is not normal for us to even have an RID. You're the first RID in years, we're trying to help you. So to be mad at us is an odd.
I'm not mad at you, I'm just saying that somebody didn't do their job. And in my experience over years and in a workforce, when you don't do your job, there are repercussions.
But in this situation, I can assure you, this doesn't happen normal for us. So is there anybody else who would like to speak on this issue? Uh, you will have an opportunity, if it's this one, yes?
Could I ask that, that those that did stand up, I'm signing in, and that way our clerk can have your name and the proper spelling? Thank you.
Here, from this?
Yes.
Yep, that would work.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else that would like to speak, uh, on, on not on the agenda, now's your opportunity. If it's on this, you're welcome to speak when it's opened up for a hearing as well. And you've heard the commissioner, uh, you know, we're not taking a vote on it right now, but I can say everything he said was 100% accurate. Uh, 100% for all of us. So is there anybody else who would like to speak on item not on the agenda? Hearing none, we're gonna go ahead and move forward to item number seven, which is approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of April 22nd, May 13th, and May 20th, 2024 briefing minutes, April 23rd, 2024 regular minutes, and May 16th, 2024 special meeting minutes as presented.
Oh, second.
It has been moved in second for the approval of the April 22nd, May 13th, and May 20th, 24, 2024 briefing minutes, and the April 23rd, 2024 regular meeting minutes, and the May 16th, 2024 special meeting minutes as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is item number eight. First of all, I need to make a clarification, Diedrich, you were right. So, with that being said, item number eight is, uh, the approval of the action agenda. We're gonna take and read everything into the action agenda. Uh, once we read it to the public, you will have an opportunity to take an item off for a special vote, or you can, uh, ask a question that'll help you to make a decision if you want to take it off for a special vote. If you take it off, you'll be able to hear us, uh, how we vote on it separately, and you'll be able to testify. With that being said, I have 14, I will take items, uh, 8.1 through 8.4. Commissioner Trask, if you'll take 8.5 through, uh, 8.9, and Commissioner Shutey, uh, 8.10 through 8.14. Item number 8.1, approval of warrants and treasures, electronic remittance, claims clearing fund, warrants number 8.105686 through 8.105978, the amount $1,730,882. Claims clearing fund, warrants, no, that's what I did, direct deposit fund, warrants number 107429 through 107845, the amount $911,585.31. Salary clearing fund, warrants number 7008208 through 7008235, the amount $617,178.44. Item number 8.2, approval of the Washington State Department of Corrections DOC inmate housing contract amendment to allow for the billing of the first and the last day of incarceration. Item number 8.3, approval to set a public hearing for Tuesday, July 30th, 2024 at 9:15 a.m. to consider revision of the 2017 planning program fee schedule. Item number 8.4, approval to set a public hearing for Tuesday, July 30th, 2024 at 9:15 a.m. to consider increasing the height limit in the airport industrial zone with, uh, within the Shelton Urban Growth Area, UGA.
Item 8.5, approval of Cleveland Water District Advisory Committee bylaws. Item 8.6, approval to accept the recommendation of the hearing examiner and gratification of the right-of-way as petition subject to the conditions contained in the findings of fact, conclusion of law, and recommended, recommendations of the housing examiner for road vacation number 417. Item 8.7, approval to accept the recommendation of the hearing examiner and gratification of right-of-ways as petition subject to the conditions contained in the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and recommendations of the hearing examiner for road vacation number 418. Item 8.8, approval of the environmental health supervise, supervisor position placed at range 33 on the non-rep salary schedule. Item 8.9, approval for the county administrator to sign the work order with TKE to replace the power unit, raptor valve, and shut-off valve for the jail elevator in the amount of $58,287.64.
Mr. Chair, item 8.10, approval to appoint Cheryl Williams to the Board of Equalization as a regular member to fill a three-year term expiring May 31st, 2027. Item 8.11, approval to appoint Randy Lewis to the Planning Advisory Commission for a four-year term expiring July 2nd, 2028. Item 8.12, approval of the contract with revised for the county website redesign project in the amount of $89,400 with an ongoing yearly cost of $12,700. Item 8.13, approval to set a public hearing for Tuesday, August 13th, 2024 at 9:15 a.m. to consider the surplus of tax parcel number 32005-31-660070. And item 8.14, approval to extend the Phillips Lake County Park Agreement with Jean Ennis for an additional year commencing on August 1st, 2024.
Now that all the items have been read into the record, are there any items anybody has a question on that would help them decide whether to take one off for a separate vote? Yes, sir.
Question eight, Mr. Chairman, uh, 8.8 is environmental health deputy supervisor.
Okay, I'm gonna read that one into the record. Item number 8.8, approval of the environmental health supervisor, uh, what do you call him?
Deputy supervisor.
Deputy supervisor position placed at range 33 and non-represented salary schedule. Is there any other items that anybody would like to have pulled off for a separate vote? Hearing none, is there anybody on?
I think Mary unmuted.
Mary, did you have something?
Yeah, the title of that position is the environmental health supervisor. It's what is in the record and what was approved by HR.
Um, I, I would ask that we pull that one.
Okay, item number 8.8 to be pulled, okay? Sorry, is there any other items anybody would like pulled off for a separate vote? Is there anybody on Zoom that would have an item that they would like pulled off for a separate vote? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of today's action agenda, items 8.1 through 8.14 with the removal of item 8.8.
Oh, second.
It has been moved in second for the approval of the action agenda as presented with the removal of item number 8.8 for a separate vote. Uh, any comments? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, item number 8.8, approval of environmental health, uh, supervisor is how it's on there, so we'll pull it out that way, uh, position placed at range 33, non-represented salary schedule. Um, yeah, I don't think you would have to say anything at this moment to bring it forward. If we just, uh, can call for a motion, if there's no motion, it'll die, and we'll pick it up in the next conversation. Uh, is there a motion for item number 8.8? Is there a motion for item number 8.8? Hearing no motion, it dies for lack of emotion, and it can be brought back at some other point. Okay, next up is item number nine, other business, department heads and elected officials. Are there any department heads or elected officials who would like to talk, uh, no? What's the commission at this time? Mr. Auditor?
Oh, excuse me. Morning, Commissioners, Steve Dunkle, Mason County Auditor. Hey, just wanna give you all a heads up that, uh, working with Leo, our chief finance officer today, to, uh, send out the notice to file 2025 preliminary budget requests. So that'll start the official process to develop our preliminary budget. And financial services team is standing by to help anybody who may need help to get their inputs into munis. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other elected, uh, or department heads who would like to speak at this time? Yes?
I'd like to have my fire worship.
Good morning, Chair Netherland, fellow commissioners. I'm just, I'm here to advise you that, um, in accordance with the policy we adopted in 2022 to follow the National Fire Danger Rating System to implement burn restrictions that because effective of July 4th at 12:01, the fire level, danger level would go from low to moderate. That will mean that any land clearing burning and any residential burning will no longer be permitted, and only recreational fires will be permitted. So, um, I know that's always of great interest to the community, and as soon as I leave this meeting, we'll be sending out the appropriate notices to the community and put on the website, notify the fire districts and everyone else concerned. So, um, while I'm here, I would just, um, a couple things I would like to add is, one is we're looking at chapter 9.48, which is, uh, the Mason County Code pertaining to burn, uh, regulations. They have not been updated since 1995, so we are, we examining that and most likely bringing back for your review suggestions to those. Um, and, uh, I think that was it. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Are there any other department heads or elected officials who would like to speak at this time? Hearing none, we will move forward to, uh, our calendars. Uh, Commissioner Shutey, if you would mind starting, Commissioner Trask, then myself.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so last night I had an opportunity to visit with the Port of Allen, um, have a conversation about, uh, economic development in our community, and just, uh, just really appreciate the, um, the invitation from the port. And I know they have a lot, they've been, they've had a tough year. Um, and so it's just really good to see them continuing to push forward with things. And, um, never a bad time to get out to Allen either, it was a beautiful night, uh, up on Case Inlet, so. Uh, moving forward today, have a, uh, special meeting of the MaceCom Board of Directors. Uh, also later on this week, have a, um, have a check-in with, uh, BH ASO staff. Um, and then out for the, uh, holiday weekend, back for briefings, Mason Crisis Services System of Care Work Group, a regular MaceCom board meeting. Um, and then, uh, also have a, uh, follow-up meeting with Eric Mall from Mason Health. Um, and then a, another staff check-in with the BH ASO ahead of our July 16th meeting. I'm sure this, next week will get built out with more things, so perhaps some updates on July 8th.
All right, so right now there's a, a DNR meeting going on, but I'm missing it, obviously. And then, um, I'm gonna do a site visit with Loretta and Mike. I'll meet with, uh, Jen's, and I'm not, I'll probably get his last name, Dieter Stammer, um, with SWAC, uh, so that we can talk about changing or putting our, our SWAC information in different languages, I think specifically, um, Mung. Um, and then there's also a, uh, there's a Mason Thurston Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council meeting tomorrow morning. Um, and then I hope everybody has a very safe and, um, I'm not gonna say quiet because it's not getting quiet, uh, 4th of July, um, and celebrate our independence. And then we're back here for briefings on Monday, WASAC Virtual Assembly. Um, taking our interim executive director for Turning Point out for a thank you dinner, um, to 1889 on Monday night, so that'll be fun. Um, local emergency planning meeting. I'm not, taking that afternoon off for Ted, he's gonna have fun. Not really, but, oh, I'm, I'm not gonna say what's gonna happen to him. It's gonna be revealing. Let's see, the moon is gonna rise. And then I'm gonna have an EDC meeting on the 11th, Public Works Board Executive Committee meeting, um, Public Works Board meeting on Friday. Candidates in the Park is on, um, Saturday, the 13th. And that's hosted by the Women's Republican Meeting, or Group. Uh, back for briefings on Monday, the 15th. And WASAC Virtual Assembly, and then I'm meeting with staff also that afternoon.
Okay. So the last week's here, uh, we had our Support Service Reorganization, which we're all at, Mason Transit, we're all at. I had interviews with King Five, I was on the Curly Show, Rotary, Peninsula Regional Transportation Organization, LeAnn Dennis, Celebration of Life, fantastic lady. Uh, she was, uh, worked with Port Allen for many, many years, and then, uh, uh, she became the interim director before she passed away. Uh, Chamber of Commerce had a reboot meeting, and I want to give props to Commissioner, uh, Shutey. You did an excellent job representing the EDC and, and describing what it does. Uh, I think that was by far the best description. It may not have been how it always was, but I believe that it is how it will be in the future, and I think the community understood it better than they had in a long, long time. Uh, it's always been one of those things that everybody questions what it is and don't know. So you did a great job on that. Uh, also, thank you for representative at WASAC. Uh, what a tough, what a tough meeting. I attended that for a while, but I had to move on before I got to hear somebody's great battles, but I understand you really represented us well, and I want to thank you for that. See, uh, we had a meeting up in Lakeland Village where, uh, the sheriff was there, so I attended that. Uh, Lake Nwatsal, uh, campaign meetings out there, um, Mason County Employee Luncheon, we were at, most of us were at that. Uh, different fundraiser, I met with our grant writer, and we had a law enforcement firefighter meeting this morning. North Mason School Board, a member I'll be meeting with coming up, uh, uh, candidates, uh, with the fire chiefs in the Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority, I'll be attending Port of Wata meeting, uh, Rotary, Rotary, um, meeting with Peninsula, uh, regarding housing. And I also will probably be at the Candidates in the Park, that'll bring us back and we'll start all over again. Yes?
Commissioners, Diane said that, um, even though we talked about the 30th, that there should be a motion.
I was wondering about that.
Yes. About, um, setting a hearing for the 30th.
Yeah, it's been published for today, but we know.
Yeah, it's been published for today, but we know now they have to do the individual, so I think you're gonna be safest to make an actual motion. So there's something on the books, setting it for that date.
Seems inappropriate, this, with this, let me ask you a question. Can we, by, by reading on Monday, would that still suffice? At a briefing?
Well, it doesn't harm in making a motion to set it that way.
Just because we've already cleaned out all the calendar, we're all, through our agenda, we've not put it on our agenda either.
But you can always add during a public meeting. You can add, it's within your powers.
Yeah, it's just not proper, once we've already done it, we got to the close.
I just wanna make sure we don't have any more snafus on this.
That's why I'm asking, is there any issue with doing it on Monday?
You don't have a meeting next week to set a motion, to do any motions.
So could we, could we just notice a special meeting on Monday that is one agenda item and is setting the public hearing?
You can, or you can make a motion today.
No, I would rather do it that way, because I don't want us to get into, into a history of making motions that are not on the agenda at the end of a meeting, especially after everybody may have left. So I prefer that. So if you don't mind making for that, are you okay with that?
Yeah, I believe what we should have done is amended the motion to include...
Yes, but we didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as there's enough time on Monday to get it to the paper for next week, I assume there is. Monday's good deadline.
I would just...
Well, all you gotta do is tell them today, they only need twenty-four hour notice.
No, I'm saying for the hearing, if we're gonna set it on Monday, we have to get a notice to the paper again, and they have...
Yesterday, especially with the holiday, typically that will set it back to the Friday. So I can't...
Well, at the, well, at the same time, then, I mean, we didn't, obviously, we didn't notice this motion either, so.
Right, what I'm saying is we need to publish for the July thirtieth hearing now, so that'll be the next two, July eleven and eighteen. Mackenzie, typically the deadline for the journal is four o'clock on Monday?
Yes.
Okay, so you're gonna be fine.
But with the holiday, it, oh, well, this week is...
No, that's for this week. Next week, we're good.
We're talking about, I, I thought you were talking about noticing the meeting, the special meeting for Monday.
No, that's, we can do that, no problem.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
No, the hearing, I wanna make sure we get that done right this time.
Yeah.
Good.
So if we, if we started it, just instead of going right in, like how we have been going right into labor or whatever, I don't think we're having labor next week, close session, so.
Correct.
So at nine a.m., we could just go into a meeting, one agenda...
Special meeting, yeah, okay.
I think that would probably be the most cleanest way to do that.
Let's do it that way.
Special meeting, nine a.m.
Yeah, on Monday, nine a.m. Okay, all right. That brings us to the end of our agenda. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move we adjourn.